Need call all the matter clerk, please call Row.
Councilwoman Perkins-Augusti?
I'm here.
Councilman Questa?
Here.
Councilman Grover? Councilman Torres?
Here.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Yeah.
Councilman Keenan?
Here.
Councilman Sedano? Councilman Naza?
Yeah.
President.
Yes, Mr. President, Madam Clerk. This is a rail conference of the City Council as incorporated in the annual meeting noted of 2013, which was filed in the City Clerk's office and posted on the Vol. Board of December 27, 2012, and sent to the Star Ledger Home News Tribune in compliance with the provision of the Open Public Law of New Jersey. At this time, public speaking, any resident or taxpayer like the just City Council in a matter, please step forward, state the name and address for the record. Once again, any resident? Yes, sir.
It seems that the Honorable Frank Lautenberg kicked the bucket. So, the obese Republican governor of this state, no surprise, appointed a conservative Republican as senator. So, it seems that there's going to be some type of election. It's on a Wednesday. Why did they have it on a Wednesday? They usually have it on a Tuesday. Of the Honorable Mayor of Newark versus the Honorable Mayor of Belvedere, San Antonio?
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Any resident or taxpayer like the just City Council in a matter, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hello again, my name is Michelle Nelson.
Hi, Michelle.
And it's great to see you all again, and I want to thank you all again for signing that ordinance and making it law. Now, when I woke up this morning, I was so excited, I get to celebrate today. Happens to be the day that the ordinance become effective. But it's more of a celebration of the City Council and the city to open up the doors for a new technology and new initiatives to come to this great city. So, thank you all so very much.
You're welcome.
Now, tonight, I am here once again to ask you to please consider some additional spots that the city has allotted me. And Mr. Travis Simon was gracious enough to come here to speak also, I believe, yes, on my behalf. And again, I just want to thank you all so very much, I'm so excited, and I just can't wait for this to take off. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Yes, we wish you much success, and we want to do everything we can to try to open up more spaces for that.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any resident or taxpayer like the just City Council in a matter? Seeing none, close the portion meeting.
I need to leave that right now.
You mean?
Yeah, no. Oh, I get to stay? Yes, I can. Hold me.
Letter dated October 10, 2013, from his Honorable Mayor advising that subject to confirmation of your honorable body, I hereby appoint Daniel J. Russell as temporary judge of the Municipal Court in the City of Elizabeth pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 2B12-5B for the period November 1, 2013 through October 31, 2014 on contractual basis at the rate of $300 per session in an amount not to exceed $60,000.
Any question? Wait on.
Letter dated October 9, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Pitney Bowes, Inc., Ewing, New Jersey for the furnishing of postage, equipment maintenance, and supplies for the period October 1, 2013 through September 30, 2014 at a cost not to exceed $225,000.
Any question? Wait on.
Letter dated October 9, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Hertich Fleet Services, Inc., Milford, Delaware for the purchase of two 2014 Jeep Patriot four-wheel-drive four-door sport vehicles which will replace the two vehicles going to be scrapped at a total cost of $37,102.50.
Any question? I'm happy to see that the administration finally keep up with this tradition, and we asked for the dealer's information right up front, they got a replacement of the two there, so please go ahead. Put it on.
Letter dated October 9, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Thompson Reuters, Eagan, Minneapolis, Minnesota, Minneapolis, for the purchase of web-based data access services for the Law Department and Municipal Court Division for the period October 1, 2013 to October 31, 2013 at a cost not to exceed $10,000.
Any question? Wait on.
Letter dated October 10, 2013, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization for the purchasing agent to make the necessary arrangements to auction impounded property in possession of the Elizabeth Police Department to be held by propertyroom.com, state pre-approved online auction site. Date of sale will be set by the auction company and be published in the Newark Star Ledger, contingent upon City Council.
Any question? This, oh, for the first one, right?
It was quite some time ago, it was another auction, and I think it was to find out what kind of a proceed to generate.
Yeah, it was something, yes, to that. Did this what he was talking about?
It wasn't this particular sale, it was a different sale, but the question was how successful is it, how much money?
Money, right, something like that. And, Don, I guess we don't, probably don't have that information regarding it.
Mr. President, offhand, I don't know the answer. I know we did respond to Councilman Grover at the time, but I think it was in line with what Councilman Keenan had mentioned, yeah.
Okay, okay, all right, okay, all right.
Letter dated October 11, 2013, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute a contract with Lloyds of London through agent of record Otterstet Agency, Englewood Cliffs, New Jersey, for insurance covering cities' foreclosed properties for the period October 1, 2013 to October 1, 2014 at an annual premium of $1,100.
Any question? President? Sit here.
And the list?
The list?
Yeah.
Okay. Don, can you supply a list for us, please?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, thank you. Try to get that to Don before we have our meetings.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. Put it on.
Letter dated October 11, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Route 23 Auto Mall, Butler, New Jersey, for auto parts for light duty vehicles for various departments during the period October 12, 2013 through June 25, 2014 at a cost not to exceed $30,000.
Any question? Wait on.
Letter dated October 11, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Courier Printing Corp. for the deposit, New York, for the furnishing of printing of recycling brochures for the Department of Public Works for a period of two years from the date of the award in an amount not to exceed $21,000.
Any question?
It was a sealed bid, Council.
It was a sealed bid.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Councilman Keenan?
This recycling brochure is like the bible that everybody follows, and it's very, very helpful when it gets there as close at the beginning of the year as possible because if it's after the beginning of the year, we start getting phone calls from people saying, "Where's the brochure?" So, thank you, Mr. President.
You okay? Councilwoman, you okay?
Yeah.
You said sealed bid, so.
Yeah. Letter dated October 11, 2013, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization for the renewal of insurance with Hartford Insurance Company through the agent of record Youth Plumber Associates covering auxiliary police officers for the period July 1, 2013 to June 30, June 30, 2014 at an annual premium of $310.
Any question? Yes, Council?
Can we find out many auxiliary police officer we have for next to, if you don't mind?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Want to know how many we have?
Yeah, because apparently $310 looks very minimal.
Yeah.
For insurance, I mean, is that because we already covered them within our liability that we have?
We'll get there.
Just to know, I mean, curious to know. On one time, we used to have some men, I don't know.
I understand, what's the point? I agree, what's the point that we had quite a few?
Right. Thank you.
Letter dated October 11, 2013, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute an agreement with the Elizabeth Youth Theater Ensemble, Roselle, New Jersey, to provide creative courage workshop for students of the Building Future Leaders Program in a total amount of $28,800.
Any question?
Mr. President, this is a very, something that is excellent for our children. Can we also find out many of your kids you actually have in this program? And if it's possible, from which area of Elizabeth they usually come?
Okay.
It's good, it's something that is excellent to have. I mean, you know, we do have also somebody from Elizabeth that does a similar work, that actually graduated from Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy, that could probably be utilized for the future, just in terms of...
I concur with you, I mean, it is a very nice program.
It is a good program, yeah.
Very successful, also.
Beautiful.
But he'll get the...
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Letter dated October 15, 2013, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization to permit Michelle Nelson, the proprietor of House of Walker Publishing LLC, doing business as the Juice Elizabeth, to construct, install, and maintain four solar-powered cell phone recharging kiosks on the public sidewalk known as 80 Broad Street, 1 Broad Street, 180 Elmore Avenue, and 1089 Elizabeth Avenue.
Any question? Yes, Councilman?
Mr. President, I think after a year and a half, we've made somebody happy in Elizabeth, and I'm sure that our taxpayers and residents, they're going to enjoy this particular program for the future, so, once again, congratulations, and keep doing a good job. Thank you.
Okay. Good things come to those that wait.
I know.
Put it on.
Letter dated October 15, 2013, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply for, execute, and accept program year 2013 County of Union Workforce Investment Act Youth Employment Program grant in an amount not to exceed $75,000.
Any question?
Letter dated October 15, 2013, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization for his Honorable Mayor to execute an agreement with the Police Mechanics and Electricians Association for the period July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2017.
Any question? Wait on.
Letter dated October 7, 2013, from the Second Assistant City Attorney requesting that your honorable body consider granting municipal consent and authorizing proper city officials to execute a right-of-way agreement with United Federal Data to install fiber-optic cable in the public right-of-way on Spring Street at the Newark Boundary Line to Magnolia Avenue, Catherine Street, East Jersey Street, back to Spring Street, down to South Pearl Street, Grove Street, US 1, to Summer Street, Rare Avenue, to the City of Linden Boundary Line for a period of 15 years.
Mr. President? Councilman Keenan?
I just point out that it's for the non-exclusive use, which means that if additional vendors wanted to have access, they would have the opportunity to do so, correct?
I'm not certain, Councilman Keenan, that's from the Law Department.
A non-exclusive agreement would...
Yeah. This came out about a year ago, where I'd asked a question about the fairness of giving a right-of-way to the first company that came along, and so, a non-exclusive agreement is fine.
I'll ask Rocco about it and see if there's any other things that may inhibit that, you know, it may be the size of the pipe or something along those lines, but I'll look into it.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to know, would this help us or allow us to install in the future additional surveillance cameras in the city? Do we not?
I don't, but I can look into that.
Do we find out?
That's a good question. That's a good question.
As I'm interested particularly, I see some of it is going through the second ward, and I'd like to see if I can install some areas there, some cameras, if possible. Thank you, Mr. President.
Letter dated October 9, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer requesting authorization for the tax collector to declare tax sales certificate number 0900177, null and void, and the amount sold plus all subsequent taxes accrued therein be reinstated as taxes receivable.
Question?
Letter dated October 15, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer advising that temporary emergency appropriations for the 2014 state fiscal year municipal ensuing utility budgets may be necessary.
Question?
Letter dated October 15, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer advising that in compliance with the State Fiscal Year 2014 Appropriations Act requires that your honorable body review the city budget revenues and appropriations for the 2014 state fiscal year first quarter ending September 30, 2013, and they are attached.
I have corrective lens. Councilman, I'm more than happy to get you a...
Back to my glass.
No, not a... A blown-up copy.
Okay, put it on.
Letter dated October 15, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer requesting that your honorable body consider the approval of a bond ordinance authorizing general renovations and improvements to the City Hall Cupola scare structural sidewalks and masonry in the amount of $1 million with a down payment of $50,000.
President?
Yeah, Council?
We did some referrerating to the cupola, what's happening? I mean, steps were supposed to be repaired under some kind of assurance that we had and whatever, and now we are locating a million dollar? Where do we get this money from? Can you give us an answer, please?
We'll look into it.
Be happy to look into that.
Definitely, because, you know, we're talking about raising the taxes, I mean, we just spend money, so if the job wasn't done correctly or properly, we should go back to the contract and be able to get, you know, reimbursed or repaired, whatever, according to the standard.
Don, can you...
Absolutely.
Can you give us the information? I think this cupola happened, you pay him for the last five years, about three times already. Can we just...
You want a full history, yes.
San Peter Cupola was repaired 500 years ago.
Thank you.
You were there, right?
Oh, yeah. I walked on the dock, yeah.
Well, I was... President, repairs, but the costs associated with those repairs as well?
I think he's going to get that, right? He's going to prepare, I'm assuming, the whole...
I will prepare a full workout.
Okay, thanks. Put it on.
Letter dated October 3, 2013, from the Acting Director of Neighborhood Services requesting permission to place a lien on the property located at 1037 William Street for the partial demolition of said premises in the amount of $12,500.
Any question?
Letter dated October 3, 2013, from the Acting Director of Neighborhood Services requesting permission to place a lien on the property located at 213 Edgar Place for the demolition of said premises in the amount of $28,800.
Any question?
Letter dated October 9, 2013, from the Director of Public Works recommending awarding a contract to Tomco Construction, Inc., Mount Arlington, New Jersey, for the Veterans Memorial Waterfront Park Rehabilitation at a cost of $3,421,386.
Any question?
Ninety percent, Mr. President, has been reimbursed on the theme of...
Yes, that's correct.
Very good.
I can ask one question. There's a resident here that's asking if it's too late to speak. Yes, public speaking passed.
Letter dated October 4, 2013, from the Police Director requesting to establish handicap parking spaces. I'll put this on hold. First Ward, 12 Rankin Street. Oh, he's here, I'm thinking Grover.
I'm like...
Sorry.
No, it's not the first, it's the sixth ward now.
First Ward.
He's at large now.
12 Rankin.
Oh, he's at large now. I'm trying to get it back to see.
Rankin, that's a pseudonym.
Depends what side of the street is.
The left side is second.
The left...
Right side is you.
What about the left?
The odd side is the second ward, the odd, the odd side.
Okay. Fifth Ward, 153 Jake Street.
Hold it. Let's put hope for it.
Okay. Sixth Ward, 29 Spencer Street, that's personalized.
So, it was already there?
No. They're asking for a personalized.
Just put a note for now.
First Ward, 226 Second Avenue, personalized.
Put it on.
Okay. Sixth Ward, 27 South Reed Street.
Put on old.
Fifth Ward, 1019 Anna Street. Sixth Ward, 138 Smith Street, personalized.
Yeah, put on old.
Deletions 580 Pennsylvania Avenue and 1012 North Avenue.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman?
I would like the 611 North Ward Terrace to go on.
611?
611 North Ward Terrace, the house has a driveway, but I don't think this young boy owns the driveway. He was a former student, a graduate of the high school, and he has a condition that he definitely needs an handicap space. He called me about a month ago, and at the time, I didn't get the paper, so now we got it, and it's been denied, so I'm going to go check again the area, and need to be, we could put this on the agenda to be approved, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Okay, letter dated October 7, 2013, from the Police Director requesting to establish, let's see, a bus stop on Ambway Avenue on the north side at Bayway Avenue.
This is in the second ward here, I was looking at this, I didn't know about this, but if this is something that's going to certainly benefit the residents in that area and the traffic supervisor, Lieutenant Marcus, who I've, you know, had the opportunity to work with lately, and I trust in, you know, his decision, I'm okay with it, Mr. President.
Okay. Put it on.
Yes. A bus stop.
Bus stop. Bus stop. Would you be okay with it?
Yeah.
Letter dated October 7, 2013, from the Police Director requesting to install no parking signage on Edgar Place on the north side.
Mr. President?
Councilman Keenan?
Yeah, again, Lieutenant Marcus is really getting a lot of things. What was happening on Edgar Place was that there's no parking on one side of the street. And before he started issuing tickets, he thought it would be good to go out there and just check the signs. But he not only checked the signs, but checked, he checked the ordinance? There was no ordinance.
It was?
Was not. So, this is an example where sometime in the distant past, signs went up without an ordinance, so I'm very happy to see that this is going on, because the street is too narrow, it's only 29 feet wide, so you can't park them on both sides of the street, and people are taking advantage, you just park them there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Letter dated October 9, 2013, from Officer McNabb requesting to establish a no parking school day between the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. and from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. for additional loading, unloading of school buses.
Any question?
Mr. President, while we are on school buses, I request about two years ago, in front of, below the old 640 where the infant center is, to put a sign from 7:30, because school starts at 7:30, no parking from 7:30 until probably the time of our view, school is over. And I think I was advised that we must press an ordinance citywide in order to do that because we recognize not only the infant center, we have to recognize above the school. Right now, the sign says, "No parking from 8 o'clock" or whatever, and it's over a year or better. What's happening with that information that was supposed to be finalized or prepared by the Law Department?
Pete, I can handle that. I remember I was talking about this about 10 months ago. I had requested the council people to email me any changes that they'd liked, and afterwards, they had suspended the no parking ordinances, all of them. In that time, I had received zero emails, so I haven't had anything to prepare. So, if you'd like that, I would accept an email.
George, you mean, what kind of email you need from us?
The location that you would like the parking restrictions.
All around the school, whatever school we have in the city, whatever area that we have, like the buses and whatever, we must honor that. Like, right now, if you ever signed that says 8 o'clock, that sign is to be changed to 7:30 until closing of the school. Before, it used to be 3:00 or 5:00, now the school closes at 3:59, 4 o'clock.
I understand that, but different council people ask for different things in different places, depending on their wards.
Their wards. So, right now, it's the one across from the horse yard, right below 640, so it might be 6:30, and the infant center. You have information on the infant center on South Street, I think 640 might be 6:38. We just give last week for a dollar to, you know, so that's right there, there's an area that they don't want nobody to park except, you know, from that time to that time. At least that's one location I gave to you.
Councilman, here's what he's saying, and I understand what he's saying, I would like for, it's what he's saying, I would concur with that. I would like all council person to submit a listing along with what you just mentioned, because maybe that's more. Why don't you review your area first, okay? That's what he's saying, I concur with that, I remember him saying that. Review, always, review your area, make sure you want more than what you have, and give it to them, okay?
Mr. President, I understand that. One time, we also got maps from the, not the law, the Police Department indicating all the schools, if you remember that.
Wasn't that from North Avenue or something like that?
That was a different situation.
I think a different situation, Council.
And you can't, at long to have no say, because I wanted signs up on North Avenue, but since I'm not a ward person, that's not my ward, it don't matter, so.
Okay, excuse me. I understand what you're saying, but that came about because of the time of the school that opens up now 7:30, not 8 o'clock. And I remember whoever was in charge of, they're now retired, okay? We got all the schools on the map for the City of Elizabeth, and like each councilman or each ward, and all the lodge, you have, you could put an input, I mean, to make that change from 8 o'clock to 7:30 until 3:00 or 5:00, 3:00 p.m., now we'll be going to 4:00 p.m. We have to do that. And if you want me, I could go to all the schools that I have in my ward, I don't have too many, there's only a few, and I give you the address where actually we need no parking just because of that. I could do that. I will do that.
Yeah, that way, we give them all to one shot, and then we still have to do a piece nearly doesn't fall one shot, that's it.
Exactly, and also, the suspension that you put in for a year is about to expire very soon.
Council?
Yeah. Mr. President, I don't remember, I don't know what happened, but I had submitted a list.
That was for the shortening of the distance of parking from you just had.
No, no, I had submitted a separate list.
You did?
For that specifically, yeah. Absolutely. I have a copy, I printed it and everything, yeah. All the schools, I did all the schools with all the addresses, I put them all, and I submitted them. I still have a copy, so.
Okay, so I remember I provided everybody...
I'll afford it again. I'll forward it again, but I submitted, at that time I did submit it. I don't know what happened yet.
Yeah, I don't have it, but...
But I did submit it, but I'll do it again.
Yeah, why don't you review your, I can see if you can...
Because again, I want to be clear, this is for all the schools, so that this was like councilman said, so the buses will be able to park and there's no parking between those hours.
That's correct.
Right? That's correct. I submitted both private and public schools, I did both.
Yes, could you do it if you don't mind?
I have a copy, I'm sure, I'll be no problem.
Appreciate it. Yeah, counsel?
The attorney, George, has mentioned that the ordinance that we, that we put on motor tour and whatever was, will expire soon, do you remember when, George, so we could...
I don't know offhand, but I can get you that information.
Maybe can we try to extend until we come out with all the information? Again, it would be nice to put on the agenda, if you know the date, Mr. President, and let's say if it's expired on Christmas time, we don't want the people to get tickets on the holiday.
If you want, I can prepare a new ordinance to extend it for another year.
Why don't you do that?
Okay.
Thank you.
I will be on the same side. Why not? Do for you. Okay, that way you're giving us time, we pressure around holidays, okay?
Makes sense.
Okay, anything else?
It's gonna be a holiday next year, too.
No, we're gonna get done.
I'll be coming around the same time every year.
Yeah, we're gonna get done before that.
The holiday come around.
But we're gonna try to get done before that, you know what I'm saying?
No, we'll make it say six months, so that way we will be moved to do it in the summer where there's no, you know, time where there's no holiday, but if you keep doing it for a whole year, it's gonna come up the same time every year.
Well, I'm hopeful that you get the...
Well, we're not gonna do it, because we're not...
Oh, you're not pressing?
Yeah, it's because...
We go to the time limit?
Yeah, it's gonna be the same thing, so why we say six months? So, at least we won't be in the middle, you know, it won't last near the holiday, and then, you know, we wanna be in good cheer, so we don't wanna, we do around April, May, June, July.
We got more six month talk today.
I said six months, but then that will encourage us to do what we need to do.
That kinda tend to, we just don't know when it expires.
Well...
It's around this time, because we did it, it was around the holiday time. You weren't here.
He was.
Oh, you was on so soon.
It was around March or April.
Oh, I apologize. I thought I apologized. You know, the time, I didn't know.
If it's groundwater, first you're...
Excuse me? Stop! I thought we here.
The sooner the better.
Yeah.
Excuse me? I'm staying corrected.
That's okay. Which one?
He would like to rescind. He would like to rescind ordinance number 4411 for the handicap personalized at 112 Front Street and establish a regular handicap on 112.
I'll be finished?
No. All right, letter dated September 20, 2013, from Verena Consulting Group Somerset, New Jersey requesting authorization to perform environmental work consisting of one additional groundwater monitoring well within the right-of-way along the west side of Fourth Avenue between the street and sidewalk across from the property located at 338 South 5th Street.
Go on.
It has been asked if council would consider a commendation for Ms. Margaret Peg Missdom in the Health and Human Services Department who will be retiring. Then we have two memorials so far, Mrs. Audrey Nicole Friday for Councilman Torres and Mr. Raymond Knight Jr. Those are the ones that I was giving...
Sierra?
Oh, yeah, that's mine.
I'm trying to see. I got, I got, no, I can't see. Oh, S.I. I like Sierra.
No, that's not, she...
And I'll forward it to you.
Okay.
Yes, she did, right, she did, yeah.
About the mouth. Oh, she was?
On South, so...
Yeah, South.
Oh, okay.
She was in the building, I knew she was.
She understands that, that's how I get, but I got the good news about it, so I should be more for that. How did you...
This is the first time I'm hearing this.
Well, come this way, so forth. I don't know the addition to that. Anyway, I'll get that.
From the board or...
A little adjustment.
Yeah, Mr. President. Listen, counsel.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to go into executive or private session to discuss personal matters.
Yeah, a motion had second by counsel.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Yes.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Yes.
Wish her extremely well and respected, but I'm seriously, I miss her a lot, she's great, thank you, Mr. President.
I want additional comments.
Councilman Mazza?
Yeah, I do echo the sentiment of the third ward councilman about the lady retiring. Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I think last week we received a clarification from the attorney, I think that was your George, about the handicap signs and whether they will be allowed to be by ordinance or by whatever, so we probably defrayed the cost of the advertising, you know, in order to put an handicap sign. I don't understand, when I received the paper, can you explain to me, what did you come out of from that research that you did, and you're from city council?
I'm not sure I understand the question, I'm not sure that I prepared the memo that you're referring to.
You answer, a copy came from the law department, I think it came from you, about the handicap signs, that has to be done by ordinances, because it cost about 400, maybe cost 500, Yolanda? It came from you, George.
It came from me or it came from one of the law clerks?
It came from your recommendation, you made the research.
Well, what is the question, because I definitely didn't...
The question is, can you explain what you wrote inside that piece of paper about what has to go by ordinances, or you have to go by resolution, or you have to go by simple okay of city council?
If I may? The question was, if I recall correctly, was whether the personalized handicaps could be done by resolution. You forwarded the statute that indicated cannot, the statute does not allow us to do it by resolution.
Because of the state.
So, because of the state.
Yeah, on Title 39, the personalized license plate has to be done by ordinance.
By ordinance, so it cannot.
And because of that, across the city, how much, Yolanda?
Close to 600 dollars.
Okay. Because of that conversation, somebody was watching you too, and this lady happened to be in a sixth ward, and she actually spoke to the president of the city council, the president referred the lady to call me, so she called city all, she called me, she says, "I am a senior citizen, I cannot afford to pay an additional 200 dollars." I said, "Ma'am, let me tell you, I say, city council is working on to allow you for the future to pay even more for the advertising of your sign, right now we pick up the cost." I said, "For the future," I think that was the intent of city council, whether it was by state statute or by resolution, by whatever, you indicated that the state say you have to advertise and do the proper legal notice in a newspaper which has cost over 400 dollars to the city of Elizabeth. So, this lady that wants to save 200 dollars for the personalized, she's in for a surprise, she said, "Well, I cannot afford it," and we have a lot of people requesting that. For the future, Yolanda, is that the intent of city council, that the cost is gonna be passed on to the, to the individual people that make the application, or was just for you to say that it costs us 500 dollars to do that?
It was just our office advising council what it costs.
What it costs the cities.
To do that.
Okay, so that doesn't mean we have to increase that, the cost to the consumer, or pass it on to the consumer.
No, it doesn't mean you have to.
We don't have to do anything, we could just stay the same and absorb the cost of anybody that is applying, is that correct?
That's a prerogative.
Good. So, my friend, if you do watch this movie here, make sure that you heard that correctly from the law department and from the city clerk, and then I'll follow up with you when I pass. Thanks, George, for the explanation.
Anything else, counsel?
That's it, seriously, because that's what happened, I don't understand, it wasn't clear to me, I read it a couple times.
Here's one thing, Mr. President, very quickly, and I'm sure you all know it, or maybe some of the audience, since we reminded that tomorrow is Wednesday, but tomorrow is election day.
Yes.
So, whether you vote for one person or the other, everyone should remember. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Gonzalez?
Pass.
Pass. I'm gonna pass off, I made my comments about the commendation for the young lady that that really worked so fiercely. I was not there, but I got great reports, for someone to do CPR on someone to have managed to save someone lives, I think is important, and I think that's something that we might have to thought, looking into here at City Hall to make sure that at least one or two people on each floor, I think we should maybe one day think about making a requirement, that someone knows CPR on training here, because a place like this, certainly in my former employee, where I worked, I had to go through training for CPR, and the golf courses also, and the parks and a lot, so I think it's important that we thought, should think about that, that someone on each floor, maybe at least two people on each floor, is go through some type of, on the training of CPR, so think about that, something like... Motion to adjourn?
So, move, Mr. President.